Yeah, we're ready to go. Evening ladies and gentlemen, planning board meeting down in the meeting room. We pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America, due to the law of which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The chairman of that, you guys can all stay over in the executive session. The members, you all help to the right, the left, and then to the outside door. We have to re-exit, you go over the door.
We'll be back in a few minutes, thank you. Due to litigation. Other business, gentlemen, just make sure you turn your mics on when you get ready to talk, okay? And whoever's up to the podium tonight, regular meeting, we're going back in the regular session. First thing on the agenda is Troutback. Whoever's from Troutback, you want to get up and go, Rich, I guess? There you go.
Good evening. Rich Runia, Runia Engineering, engineer for the project. So we're here this evening to talk about Phase Eight. I think most of the members were here the last time when we went through this, so I'll keep it on the briefer side. But Phase Eight from the ARP, the Adaptive Reuse Plan, was considered the pool renovation portion of the project. So the existing, that's there now, is there's an existing outdoor pool area, there's an existing set of wellness barns, and an existing pole barn where they have activities. So that, in ARP, it considered the remodeling of that entire area. So Phase Eight now includes redoing the existing pool, renovating the bathhouse, renovating a snack bar, and constructing an indoor pool structure. That was specifically what was listed in the ARP. As we had said, all along with each phase that you see, Troutback has gone back, they've tried to further refine, they've tried to cut and save where they can, condense, come up with shared services. So that's what's happened here with Phase Eight again. So we see that there's a small rearrangement of the components. The biggest rearrangement of components is the existing pole barn. Instead of leaving that kind of floating out there and then having the wellness barns, an outdoor pool, and then a separate indoor pool, the idea was to connect everything together in a much better fashion and have the indoor pool be connected to the wellness areas because the wellness areas where, say, the spa portion of things are, you can work out there, you can use the sauna, there's locker rooms, there's showers. So it made a lot of sense of what can we do for efficiency? So the proposal now is to take that existing pole barn and put the indoor pool in its footprint. And then the use of the indoor pool or the indoor or the pole barn now moves over to the outdoor pool, and that goes in the structure shown on the ARP as the indoor pool. So it was just a swap of uses within the buildings, but generally the same footprint. So one of the small items that's a little bit separated from the group now is the small bathhouse. That will have the restrooms, changing areas, outdoor showers, and it's also proposed to have a green roof, which we think is a nice added feature for the project. And the indoor pool area will need a new septic, but other than that, the existing septic that was approved and constructed with the wellness barns for, that was approved back in 2019, that'll remain intact and handle everything for the wellness barns, the outdoor pool area. So it's just one small septic that's being proposed. So the net result of this is reduced impacts, again. So we're reducing the building coverage, reducing the water usage, reducing wastewater disposal needs, reducing the impervious cover, and reducing the stormwater runoff. And then the other thing to note is the gravel parking lot area. That was formerly part of Phase Six, when Phase Six was going to be a restaurant, but as we know now, that's a guest cottage. So we've shifted that reworking of the gravel parking lot into this phase as well, too. But there's no increase in the overall project disturbance area. We also provided architectural elevations of everything, and at the end of the day, there's about an 833 square foot reduction in building footprint and 240 gallons reduction in water usage, on a daily basis, that is. So since our last meeting, we did have comments from John. We were able to address those, submitted a new submission package for you. Part of that resubmission included a secret consistency statement, which we talked about and where we went through piece by piece from the original seeker resolution and then showed where we met or exceeded. And then we looked at additional lighting. So some additional lighting has been added, mainly on the deck, on the top of the posts of the deck. The idea is still to have very low levels of lighting, but just enough so people can move about and then also operations can be able to check everything and for security and look at the pool and make sure everything is operating correctly. The other thing that I think was a little confusing in the plan before was we didn't clearly show every access point to the buildings. So we've now done that, and we've kind of enlarged arrows and we showed where those are. The indoor, I think John had a question on how do you, how does the actual guest get into the indoor pool? And the answer on that is for them to go into the existing entrance of the wellness barns. So there's a covered portico between the two wellness barns. So all the guests will arrive at that same entry point, which is the entry point to the wellness barns now. So that's the idea of how they'll enter.
Okay, John?
As Rich said, they, excuse me. Make sure it turns on. As Rich said, they did get my original comment memo. I did review, and you have in front of you a revised, a comment memo on the revised submittal. Predominantly what's left, and I'll summarize, because it's a lot of dotting i's and crossing t's, okay? They submitted a complete SWIP covering Phase Eight. One of the aspects they're taking credit for, tree planting and tree preservation, which you're allowed to do, and they took a rather substantial credit. I just need to see how they arrived at that. There's no real breakdown or area detailed, so I need that. They did make some comments about the Health Department approval, they realized they've got to get that. I just want to make sure you include the pools as well, because you're going to need Health Department approval for those pools.
Yes.
And just to keep updated, I think the key takeaway here is that, as Rich said, they did submit a secret consistency statement. I took a pretty detailed look at it. I take no exception to its form and content, and I would defer to Paul as to the final form and content, but I think they've substantially addressed at least my concerns. Couple issues still need to be, their belt and suspenders. As Rich said, they've now clarified how they get into the wellness barn, and they kind of put a pedestrian path on there, but the final walkway into the existing wellness center is not lighted. So I don't know whether your intent was to create a continuous light path from the parking area, which you do acknowledge, into that building. So I still think you need to take a look at that lighting. They did, they are putting a gate just past the handicap parking spaces, so not to encourage folks. I guess there's a couple signs out there that already say, you know, no through traffic, dead end, no vehicles. Those were not indicated on the site plan set. You said they were there, but I couldn't find them, so.
Yeah, we'll clarify that to me.
And as long as emergency responders are okay with that gate and can access through it, I got no problem with using it. And they, you know, I'd still like to see a slight turnaround, but I understand why there's not one there, so I'm not, I'm not in love with that. They do have, as you recall, a requirement to protect, to provide protection for threatened and endangered species. They have a barrier fence that they propose. What's interesting, the way the barrier fence goes, it kind of restricts access to the wellness barn, because I think the wellness barn is going to be open while you're building this. So I think you got to rethink how that barrier is going to be put in place so people can still access the wellness barn, even if it's a pedestrian access, you might have to create some signage and other things. And then, other than that, the only thing, it's an oddball one, is I can't find a place for refuge for the amenity building snack bar.
And I can answer that, because everything that's generated every day, with this being a resort type use, is all collected by staff and then brought to the main dumpster area. So currently, right now, they don't have it.
As long as that's noted on the drawing, Rich, I have no problem with that. That's a, it's just that, you know.
Right.
It's just one of those oddball things. But other than that, Mr. Chairman, as far as I'm concerned, I think this would be ready if you wanted to schedule a public hearing.
Good evening, Paul.
Yeah, I would concur. I read John's comments, obviously, I think they're on the right track with the secret consistency, and I believe we can work with that in terms of the board's review. So I would have no objection to calling for a public hearing for November, I guess it would be.
Bless you, bless you. Thank you, bless you.
We need a motion to have a public hearing for Troutback.
Soon.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so carries. Do you want to talk about the?
Who is the motion and seconded?
Who's the motion?
I seconded.
Okay, thank you.
And everyone was in favor.
Available date, Judy?
Want to talk about the?
Absolutely.
We're trying to pick out a date.
There's only one meeting in.
Yeah, I think by then.
Yep.
It's going to have to be December, because the last meeting, remember, is Thanksgiving.
Yeah, we're not doing that.
December 11th.
December 11th it is. Okay, December 11th is your public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
And then we have one more thing on Troutback, so.
Absolutely.
Attorney to talk about that.
So we've prepared and shared with the board a resolution that would clarify certain of its findings from the July 12, 2023 resolution that granted a special permit for the Troutback Adaptive Reuse Plan. This resolution is for the board's consideration. If it's approved, it will be shared with the court involved with the pending litigation to help the court further understand the board's compliance with the adaptive reuse law. If I may, I'll just summarize its provisions.
Yeah.
July 13, 2023, the planning board approved a special permit for an adaptive reuse plan to preserve the historic character of land and to reuse and expand the use of buildings on the land in town of Armenia. This resolution included findings pertaining to the project's compliance with zoning law section 121-14.2i, which I'll refer to from here on as the adaptive reuse law. And through this resolution, the board seeks to provide supplemental clarification of the project's compliance with the law, as discussed in more detail below. As part of its special permit, planning board required two easements to preserve the historic character of Troutback's land and buildings as required by the adaptive reuse law. These easements included a conservation easement to preserve the historic character of the land, and an easement to protect the character of the three historic buildings on the land. Together, the approved project and these recorded permanent easements comprise a comprehensive scheme to preserve and protect the historic character of Troutback's property as required by the zoning law. For all proposals for an adaptive reuse development, the zoning law requires a plan to be presented by the applicant to preserve, maintain, restore, and renovate existing structures on the property. Troutback provided a plan to voluntarily, essentially, not by easement, preserve the historic structures on the property. The law also requires a plan to place a historic preservation easement on the property to maintain its historic character. For that element of the plan, Troutback proposed a conservation easement, which I will discuss in further detail either, later. So all that's required by this provision of the adaptive reuse law is a plan from the applicant, which is then subject to the planning board's review. For any application that involves uses other than those allowed in the underlying zoning district, such as the project, because it proposed lodging facilities, which are not allowed by right in the rural residential zoning district. The adaptive reuse law require respectively, a conservation and historic preservation analysis and an adaptive reuse plan. Troutback complied with the requirement for a conservation analysis, and they followed the zoning law provision, separate zoning law provision, 121-20A, which takes you through that and has the applicant identify the lands that are of the, that are of the most conservation value and to propose an easement to preserve those lands. Troutback also complied with the zoning law with respect to the need to prepare and provide an adaptive reuse plan. The adaptive reuse plan that Troutback provided was based upon the conservation analysis that was done and accepted by the board. The conservation, so what Troutback did in making its conservation findings on the conservation analysis, the planning board accepted the proposed conservation easement proposal with, with respect to the land that it wanted to conserve. But at the same time, it said that it would want to, as part of the special permit review, also address the need for an easement to protect the historic character of the three buildings on the property. So, and in the zoning law, the planning board has the authority to attach conditions to an adaptive reuse plan, a special permit for an adaptive reuse plan, that it deems necessary to preserve the historic character of the property. So when the planning board issued its special permit for the project, it included a condition of that approval that said that before any building permit could be issued for the project, it would have to provide an easement that covered the three historic buildings on the The map of the conservation areas that are covered by the conservation easement is provided as Exhibit A to this resolution. The actual conservation easement, which has been recorded with the Duchess County Clerk, is included as Exhibit B to this resolution.
Could you call a question, Lou? Could we not just let this, we. Not just let this resolution speak up for itself? I mean.
We, we, we could, but the chair had asked that we make sure that the public was aware of what the board was doing.
Okay.
And then Exhibit Three is the historic preservation easement that covers the three buildings, the three historic buildings on the site, and that requires that any exterior improvements that Troutback may want to undertake, that it must comply with recommendations from the state historic preservation office based on National Park Service guidelines. So that altogether, again, this kind of comprehensive approach to protecting the historic character of Troutback, from, in terms of what the resolution says, excuse me, complies with the requirements of the adaptive reuse law, the resolution, if adopted, doesn't change any of the other findings that were made by the planning board, and it's only intended to supplement them. Everything else remains in full force and effect. Excuse me. That's it.
Uh, we already the resolution?
The resolve clause. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board's conservation findings in July 12, 2023 approval resolution are supplemented only to the extent necessary to include the additional findings provided in this clarifying resolution, and all other provisions of the approval resolution shall remain in full force and effect. Be it further resolved, that this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Motion.
You make the motion?
I second.
Uh, motion made by, please, again?
Jim.
Jim?
Walsh.
Second?
Senator.
John? Okay, roll call, vote. Robert Boils Jr., chairperson.
Yes.
Nina, deputy chairperson, is absent. John Stephanopoulos.
Yes.
James Walsh.
Yes.
Walter Dietrich.
Yes.
Ken Topolsky.
Yes.
Jamie Vitello.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That's on the agenda, Silo Ridge. Real kind of D and E site plan, the whole temporary gym pit, so. I wanted to. You can use your easel, too.
I don't know if they use them all over by. I don't know if they have any.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. We have two things on the agenda tonight. Condos D and E as well as the temporary relocation of the tent. Do you have a preference, which one you want to start with?
I'll zing the.
Okay. Very good. The board you have in front of you here is the approved plan that exists for Silo Ridge in this area. The larger building, we refer to as Condo A. You follow clockwise from there around Eagle Pass, you'll see there's two buildings. Those are condos B and C. And then after condos B and C, there are three clusters of units, those are townhomes. They're in a cluster of four, five, and four. That's what was originally approved, both as part of the master plan as well as the approved site plan. What we're here tonight for specifically on this application is we would like to remove the 13 townhomes, the three clusters of townhomes, and replace that with two condo buildings, with six units in one, four units in the other. There's no change in overall square footage, no change in drainage patterns, no changes in bedrooms. In fact, the bedrooms are theoretically decreasing at this point. We're going from 13 units to.
Can you tell me how many bedrooms are in the new condos, please?
I'll have the, I'll get that answer for you. I don't have it offhand.
Okay, thank you.
It's in the plans, though.
Uh, it's not.
It's not? Okay. So I will get that answer for you, John. So there's a net decrease overall in the number of bedrooms, impervious area that's associated with it. Silo Ridge reserves the right, since it's going down by three units, to potentially put those three units back. If it fits within compliance of the master plan, within condos A, B, or C up there, could add one, one condo per unit would, would offset that. There's no, from an environmental perspective, no changes from schoolchildren. Generally speaking, tax revenues are going to stay about the same with the unit replacement going across. There's no increased burden on any infrastructure, be it sewer, water, associated with the site. No changes to drainage, impervious areas for, obviously, we're staying within the development limits that were originally approved for the townhomes and for what's considered the core condo village green area. No change to aesthetics, number of floors is staying the same, massing of the buildings is essentially staying the same. Some minor architectural changes in materials, things of that nature, but all changes are in full compliance with the material criteria that are outlined in the master development plan, so we're consistent from that standpoint. We questioned whether or not this would actually require a master plan amendment, taking out the three blocks of townhomes to replace with the two condos. We applied for the master plan amendment. This would be the second master plan amendment associated with a project. The first one was approved in 2020. And for that master plan amendment, what we did is we added one condo unit to each of the condo units called condo unit three, 3.1, 3.2, 3.3, and 3.4. We added one unit to each of those buildings. Though those units were taken from, which shows on this plan up there, VG1 and VG2, where our house lots approved as part of the master plan, original site plan, that are not going to be used at this time. And in addition to that, there were two Club Meadow lots, 13 and 16, that were eliminated. And so to offset those four units, they were put in the condos. We have no offset of units here. We're actually going to be in hand three units that could go somewhere else in future planning exercises. So we weren't confident that this would require a site plan, excuse me, master plan amendment. We applied for it. If the board and staff think it's appropriate, we'll follow through. If the master plan amendment is not necessary, we'll rescind that and just move forward with the site plan amendment at this time.
Where are these? Where are the townhomes that are, are they the three at the top right?
What I'm going to do is try to slide this a little bit forward. The new setup's a little harder for presentation purposes. The three sets of townhouses are right here. We typically, we've referred to this as condo A area, that's where the clubhouse, things of that nature were proposed. These are condo units, we call them B and C. They're not built yet. None of this over here is built. We're just showing you the general core area and the way this portion fits in. This is townhomes one through four, four cluster townhomes, five cluster townhome, and another four cluster townhome here. We're proposing, and I'll show you, the proposed board to take these two clusters out of nine units. We're taking all the clusters out theoretically.
I'm trying to envision where this is. Is this a parking lot today?
It's, no, it's, it's undeveloped today.
It's kind of where the construction vehicles park, you know, where the drop-off for the golf carts is, it's the top of the hill?
Yeah.
Yep.
Down below.
It's back behind that.
Down below.
Oh, is the, is that along the main, is that?
Red Tail Pass, yes.
This is, yeah, this is Red Tail Pass, coming in up around here. This is condos one, two, three, and four. So this is the one that burned down.
Just past the fire.
Yeah, it's stuck in here. And then you come up around the corner here, and you have the golf, the golf cart. and you have the golf, the golf cart path going up to the...
Rich House.
To the Rich House over there. And then there's parking along this area here, gravel parking. And in here, there's, I'll call them facilities, buildings, or temporary facilities buildings in this location.
So I'm sorry. For those of us that haven't got a clue what's in there, which is most of Amenya, I take it that the, in the picture down on the right-hand corner, this is what's built already? Well, a little further in, under the green. That's what we see from 22 now, kind of? A little bit?
It would be hard to see that from 22.
Okay, where is 22 on?
22 was...
Is over there.
Right.
Okay.
About where my arm is, plus where mine is.
And 343 is on the top, yes?
Way, way top.
All right, thank you. That's all I needed to know.
You might see this from the hairpin turn on Route 44. You might see portions of this.
Right.
This is the gatehouse, which you see from 22 here. And there's a golf, golf hole over here by where I'm standing that's readily visible from 22. I, to the best of my knowledge, I don't think you can see these condos. This is condo set one over here, condo set two. They're in accordance with the master plan. Condo sets re-order. Sorry.
So which ones do you actually see from 22? Are they, they not on this picture? Because you can see some from across the golf course near the entrance to Silo Ridge.
If you see anything, I think it would be 3.1 over here possibly.
Those are already constructed?
These are all constructed.
Okay.
This is the one that burned down. So there are three buildings here. This one's been removed, disbanded. It will be rebuilt at a later day. So you might see this one here, but that's about the extent of what I think you could see from 22. Be very difficult to see in this area.
You can't see very much, but where the entrance is, there's golf, the golf course.
That's right.
And right on the other side of that, there's buildings.
Right, you see right there.
I know, I know what you're seeing over there now. Now I know what you're seeing. You're seeing the VG lots, I'm sorry. These are, you do see these. These are single-family homes. They come down just about to the point where the entrance gate is here. You have one, two, three, four, five single-family homes. Those are the ones that you see.
That are connected to each other?
No, they're separate, but they're very far.
I can see ones that are, have balcony, balcony, balcony from 22.
If you're looking on 22, you are seeing that first set of condo three up there on the turn. That one you can see pretty clearly because it's got the big wall in front of it. And you gotta be really looking, but that's probably what you're looking at.
I don't know.
This will be resolved when we have the meeting of planning boards. I'll originally give you the tour. So everybody will be very familiar with it.
So my question is, how high, how many floors are we talking about with these condos? Are we talking about one floor, two floors, three floors, maybe?
Three floors.
Ah-ha.
Same as the townhomes that were proposed there. No change in...
We're talking about three floors, then?
Yes.
There used to be a issue in town about buildings with three floors. Has that changed?
There are three floors on numerous condos. The issue in town may have been with the fire department at one time.
I don't, don't know. These were, these were originally approved as three-story with garage under. There's several of them. I think somebody has a partial ladder, tower ladder. So I think that that's been addressed, Jim. And New York State Building Code, because they're all sprinkled, they're allowed, they're allowed up to three stories. So this is fair, this is exactly consistent with the original approval. It's just the form, it's just the form of the structure. The original approval was for attached townhomes on fee simple ownership lots. These are going to be condos. You're doing, they're consolidating the fee simple, fee simple ownership lots and doing away with them.
So is this just in a, in a way to drive better sales? Is it, are the condos...
Changing demographics. I mean, Silo now, you know, it's eighth year in development. And over that period of time, things have transpired, COVID, other things. And there's just a changing demographic and changing demand. And the demand is completely diminished, nonexistent for the townhomes, but there is still a large demand for condos out there. And so this is, you know, kind of consistent in the way you ask why here and not over there at this time? You know, we've been building out the condos around the village green in this manner, kind of a counterclockwise manner. This would be the next logical set to build, but there are townhomes. And so rather than skipping over or trying to do something that didn't make sense from a planning perspective, because we want to keep looking at this area here to see if there are improvements that can be made in the clubhouse and with the other condos, makes sense to follow the development pattern working around the town green and do these two buildings over here next. I have not answered your question. Did that answer your question? I don't have a thought.
So much of this predates me. So forgive me for this, but I believe your original plan when submitted was for X number of properties or lots?
245 units.
Right.
Didn't define the number of lots per... In the master plan, it doesn't define, per se, the number of lots. It defines the overall number of units.
Will this increase that? Or is there a net decrease from what I'm hearing you say is?
There's, I am going to say there's no net decrease in it because they may, if planning works out in the future, the three units, there are 13 units here. We're putting up 10. That, right now, today, there would be a decrease of three. Those three units in the future, if it makes sense and it works, may come over, you know, one in each of these buildings. So there's a net change of zero.
All right, I see your three and raise you.
The bottom line here is that there is no net increase. 45 is, 45, 245 is the base number. And it's going, in Silo's ideal world, when their project is built out, they will have hit that number. Right now, today, given the various subdivisions and other things that have occurred, they're less than 245. That 245 also includes the Phase Two, which has not even been approved whatsoever. So as I said, in the bottom line, right now, today, this, the effect of this would be neutral, so to speak, because the, units never seem to disappear. They just reappear in a different configuration. So as I said, in the ideal Silo world, I'm sure the gentleman from Silo will confirm that when they all pack up and go home, they want 245. And that's, that's, that's all they're allowed, according to our review today.
But we're not voting on anything tonight, actually.
No, no. Matter of fact, I, I do have a memo. If you, and I apologize for being late, but this, this one's kind of complicated. And there's a couple of things that I, unless you got questions for Patrick, I'd like to kind of patch in some of the blanks here. Just, just to refresh everybody's memory, there was an application for a much different project submitted back in 2022. That application was officially withdrawn, and it's now been replaced by this current application. And I'm not going to read this memo, but basically, as Patrick said, there were 13 fee simple townhomes proposed there with 4, 52 bedrooms. To remind everybody, all the water, sewer, and other demands on Silo are a function of bedrooms. So that's the number that makes, that I focus on. The number of units is somewhat fungible, but the number of bedrooms is what I focus on. So they are now proposing 10 total units in two condo buildings. And those condo buildings, just to re-echo what Patrick said, match others in the core area. They are three-story. In this case, they have parking below. And they have exterior driveways that connect to Redtail Pass. In other words, you drive in, go in the basement, you park your car, you take an elevator, and you go to your unit. To Patrick's point, the project will require an amendment, an amendment to the master development plan. The reason that Paul and I believe an amendment is appropriate is they are changing styles. They are going from fee simple ownership townhomes to an additional condominium operation. So that requires, in our mind, an amendment to the master plan, to keep the master plan, which if you think of the master plan as a simple spreadsheet that, that charts the development, since you're changing units, we need to keep that consistent. So we need to amend the master plan. It also accrue, requires an amendment to the approved Phase One site plan. And because it involves lot consolidation and changes to easements and other structures, it's going to need an amended subdivision approval. Now, the one thing that I will alert you to, and the reason why this memo is somewhat preliminary, is the administrative process for both the subdivision and the site plan are fairly complicated. And the reason being is, think of this, what they are doing is essentially cutting what looks like a puzzle piece out of the center of this and then putting it back in. While there are properties that surround it, there are easements that are already in place. The infrastructure's already built out. And here we are, as Patrick said, eight years down the road, properties have changed hands. And I'll give you a perfect example. The application was filed under the name of Silo Ventures Property A LLC. The actual property on which these townhomes reside is today owned by Silo Ventures Multifamily LLC. Now, they're two distinct legal entities. They may have the same managing partners. They may have the same managing elements, but under New York State law, they are viewed as two separate owners. So to administratively keep track of this, we're going to need an owner's authorization for Silo, whatever the entity is, to, to make the application. They have a piece of property next door that needs to be amended. I'm not sure who still owns that because it may have transferred to the HOA. So we're just trying to get the rope around this thing, but administratively, there's a lot of i's to be dotted and t's to be crossed that we have to work through to make sure that at the end of the day, everything is properly organized. And I hate to be that guy, but that's what's necessary. For the purposes of secret, just to remind you all, this was a finding statement. This was a DEIS. You issued a finding statement. In this case, a consistency statement or determination will be required. The project has changed, arguably. The changes, in my mind, are not significant, and they do not result, in my mind, in any new circumstances or, or conditions that were not previously considered or that would cause or result in any significant adverse impacts. They're basically replacing one style of unit with a different style of unit and different ownership provisions. Relatively simple. The project, basically, as they proposed it and can be modified, as modified, can be carried out in conformance with the conditions and thresholds in the original project findings. That's a general statement in the beginning. That's going to be up to these guys to demonstrate. They've kind of started it, but there's details missing, like the number of bedrooms and a few other things that we just need to tie off. Now, the other thing that you need to understand is that the, the area surrounding the proposed project is substantially complete. The infrastructure work, road, utilities, and drainage are all in and all operational. The proposal utilizes that existing infrastructure to accommodate this new proposal. They're not proposing any substantive changes. There are modern modifications that need to be done. There are some infrastructure modifications that need to be made, but it doesn't appear that any new approvals from any other agency, either Health Department, DEC, or DOT, are required for the utilities or those things because they've all been taken care of. This is internal to the project site. We're not adding anything. They're actually, if you were to go out there, they've actually got the service laterals for the water system and the service laterals for the sewer system in place. They're just extending them to a new location on given building. So it doesn't reopen any of those outside agency approvals, but for one. They, they may need, and the jury is still out because I don't have enough detail yet, an amended stormwater pollution prevention plan covering the proposed stormwater modifications that are required. The way this was done with the townhomes, they had a little gentler slope, and they were kind of letting their runoff go down to the green. Now they're adding a retaining wall. They're doing a few other things, and they're actually making some physical stormwater improvements to connect to what's already in place. So we just need, they need to validate that, and they need to provide additional detail and substantive analysis that shows that the existing facilities can accommodate those changes. The other interesting thing is the architecture, the lighting, and the landscaping, as they've got it proposed in this particular setup, is intended to be consistent and blend with the previously approved requirements and standards. They're not creating anything new here. They are, they've looked at what was approved. They had the approved architecture for this part of, the part of the community. They had the approved lighting, and they're just continuing it through this development proposal, except for the fact that it's now got to be tweaked a little bit to accommodate different buildings. So that brings me back to, as we've done in the past, when things like this have occurred, it's going to seem somewhat redundant, but the Silo Ridge, as we've discussed, has a design review committee that needs to review and look at these things. That committee represents more than the ownership of these. It represents other homeowners and other things in the community. So as a consequence, we're probably going to ask for, at some point in time, a sign-off from the Silo Design Review Committee because these, these people basically bought into a project that's now being altered.[1597.32] So their representative, the Design Review Committee, is going to need to sign off on it. That being said, these are my kind of like preliminary comments, but I think they set the stage as to where we need to go and what these folks need to do. I'd be more than happy to answer, I do have, you know, if you, I did bring what was originally proposed and what's now being proposed for each of the utility elements and other things, I don't think it's worth going into that detail, but as Patrick said, mostly what you see around there is built. And this is, we're essentially cutting out a puzzle piece, repainting the surface of that puzzle piece, and putting it right back in the same hole.
I got a question. Since we're going from a single-family...
Not single-family, we're going from fee simple lot ownership in a townhouse.
Okay, so this, because we're talking about modifications from an original plan, do we have to require a site plan review here?
Yes, that's part of this.
Okay.
You need to amend the site plan, that is correct, sir.
Okay.
That is one of the things I...
I didn't hear that specifically, but...
Yes, we need to amend...
I was just wondering, okay.
We need to amend the approval that was issued as part of Phase One.
Okay, thank you.
Paul Yang?
Concur with John's comments. The only thing I would add is because there is a change in the type of ownership, and also because there is a reduction in the number of units, I think John and I would recommend that we refer this to the Workforce Housing Board, so they have the opportunity to provide a recommendation.
Is any zoning variance required for this, or basically, it's all within the zoning? We don't have...
Yeah, it's all within the existing zoning, it's, but just needs site plan approval and an amendment to the master plan, the overall master plan.
I asked you to, I'm very happy to submit this to the workforce deposit, too, relative to the work that I'm at, Silo Ridge, so please articulate a little more on the line of this.
Yeah, the zoning law requires that for any application for a special permit, site plan review.
If I may, what ends up happening, the code has been changed since you went through this process the first time?
Yes.
And what ends up happening, the new code requires a referral. Now, arguably, you're switching one type of unit for the other, but to be correct and to basically provide belt and suspenders, if you will, we're recommending it go back to the workforce housing, so there is no confusion. They have a tendency to sometimes question what this board does, and we'd like to forego that by being proactive and sending it to them upfront.
Understood, understanding it's a referral, not another agent's...
That's correct. No, it's simply a referral.
And I apologize, I should have prefaced it by saying it is a new law, since the original approval was put in place, that's absolutely right. And that's one of the key provisions of it, it's pretty much automatic.
Absolutely, well, we certainly, you know, fully comply with zoning across the board. I was just, if you said referral, I didn't hear it, and I was curious how another new approval process...
Well, and just, you know, again, to go a little further, it's basically, they have a period of time where they can provide recommendations back to this board, it doesn't affect this board's review in the meantime.
Understood.
You know what you got to do with that, and you want to talk about Temporary Gym and Fitness Center?
Any additional questions on...
Questions, comments, I think we covered it all.
Where did you go? Okay. At the last meeting, we tended, we informed you that we were making a temporary move, a temporary structure from essentially where, very close to where those condo buildings are being proposed now, in fact, the structure has to be taken out of there, the existing tent, temporary structure, to build those in the future. And we had presented to you that we're going to move it from that location over onto the tennis courts, and it was agreed to kind of moving a temporary structure from point A to point B, and it's already used for recreation purposes, there's already parking there, there's utilities there, it's not visible from 22, impossible to see it from 22, actually. And so it was agreed that sounds like a temporary move, there's no approvals necessary, but you did request to keep you informed of what was going on over there with respect to what kind of tent it was going to be, provide some more background regarding its location, you know, demonstrating on a plan where it was, and provide information regarding the tent and the fitness facility itself. So about a week, I think about a week and a half ago, plus remarks, we put together a small package, it included probably an eight-page section from the tent manufacturer, who provides the structure, metal frame structure with the tent coming over it, showing the proposed fitness layout with the fitness machines, things of that nature, the location of it on the tennis court, we demonstrated the water connection, which is already in place, that we would tie into, and where we would tie in sewer. We also provided photos of the location where it's going to go, and we provided you photos of the existing facility, so that you could see it was a temporary facility, and we're taking an old temporary facility that's scenic years, and we're going to replace it with a new tent, which we'll be using for about a year and a half to two years, until Silo Recreation Facility completes its construction of the final phase of the field house over there. So if there are any questions, it showed up on the agenda.
I can add a little bit to this, folks, perhaps. Basically, I'll echo what Patrick said, they did, we received, the letter is dated October 10th, I received it via email on October 16th, that's neither here nor there, but basically, it is, as Mr. O'Leary indicated, gives you a full-blown detailed packet on what's proposed, it also gives you pictures of the existing. So in that little core, there's a little, if you remember the old Sagala Country Club, I guess that's where the townhouse, I guess that's where the clubhouse used to be? Yeah, and they kind of preserved bits and pieces of it, they put a trailer in there, they supplemented the trail, you know, it was one of those like construction trailers, they supplemented that with a little tent, and through the years, it's fulfilled a multitude of purpose, but as the community evolved, what it became was the Temporary Fitness Center. It became, in essence, that portion of the clubhouse that had not yet been built. So as they said, what they want to do is they want to pluck it from that location and move over to the tennis courts, which are essentially on the other side of the community, directly across, relatively speaking, from the Family Activities Barn, which is now like the central clubhouse, but it's more family-related, children-related, it's associated with the pool, and the pond, and the accessories related there, too. And what they, there are right now two tennis courts with complete parking. So what they're proposing to do is take the one tennis court closest to the road, but it's screened from the road by an actual earth berm, just the way they graded things, and by road, I mean internal road, not Route 22, there's a whole slew of trees, evergreens and everything between that and 22. And what they're proposing is basically a four-season tent, and it basically, I've had some experience with them, and they are like storefront-type walls supplemented with plastic panels, and then a plastic roof with basically a steel frame structure. I'm not sure whether they're building a floor on top of the tennis court or not.
The deck, yes.
They do it several ways, but they're putting a slight deck over it, they put it up, and it's one of these things, it probably takes three days to erect and three days to take down, but it can be heated, it can be whatever, in this case, it has a little core internal knock-up, internal mock-up set of restrooms and facilities that will be temporarily connected to water and sewer. So under your code, there are really no provisions for a temporary use such as this. And I've looked at it a couple ways, I've talked to, with Paul, no matter how you slice it, it's a minor project. Basically, you're replacing one temporary facility with another temporary facility at another location. If you really had to, if feet held to the fire, it's the conversion of an existing structure, in this case, a tennis court of less than 5,000 square feet, to another use, in this case, an enclosed fitness facility. There's no increase in pervious, no increase in anything, you're not changing the community in any way, shape, or form. So in our mind, it's a temporary facility, and basically, again, I hate to say this, belt and suspenders, what I think Paul has come up with, it might be simple just to prepare a simple resolution that says, we looked at it, yeah, it's okay, and it gets adopted and put in the record. It's not a formal site plan amendment, it's basically a resolution that would acknowledge a temporary field change. And one of the things that we would ask, that we don't have, is perhaps a date of removal. In other words, on or about a certain date, you would be in a position to remove the facility, just so we have an end date that we know how to work with.
I think I did reference it in the narrative.
I think it's tied, I don't think it's tied to a date, I think it's tied to an activity over which we have no control, so we'd like a more definitive date.
We'll provide...
And if that's okay with you, what we would do is have that simple resolution ready for your action at the next meeting.
Have a question you...
Yes, I do. Have we looked at a visual analysis of this temporary facility that we're putting up?
Yes, it's included in, it's included in the documentation, I don't know if anybody looked at it, I did. You can't, you can't see it from any place except either end and standing on top of the berm next to it.
Okay, so you're comfortable with the visual impact at this point?
I don't perceive a visual impact, so the simple answer would be yes, sir.
Thank you.
Is it, it's a physical tent? There's no picture of the future?
There is, yes, sir.
In the email that we received, it's all there.
And the simple answer is, I've done these...
It is a tent, it's on a metal frame.
You can flip through, but there are actual, I've used these in several locations, I think if any of you have been to the wedding venue at the Grand View in Poughkeepsie, there's a tent that they've used since they opened, and it's essentially, maybe not the same manufacturer, but the same idea. And the reason it appears so substantial, it must, it takes no loads. So that's why it is the way it is, and interestingly enough, these things are actually, I think the one they ordered is off the shelf, alls you do is the basic structure, they send you with the roof, and then you order certain components and they send that with it, and they just basically knock it up.
Can you pass that, man?
I certainly can, sure.
Anything else? Silo Ridge, gentlemen?
We've had enough, we've had enough, Mr. Chairman, the board has had enough.
I'm sorry, I have one comment, sorry.
Absolutely, sir.
And this is not related to either of the two items, but when you gentlemen came to visit us, you told us you would send us an organization chart, so we kind of know who we're talking about and what, and we have not received it, as far as I know, so when we talk about...
I apologize for that.
Thank you.
We owe you an update on that, as well as another subject. We are working on the organization chart, and that will be forthcoming while we're appearing before you on condos G and E. In addition to that, we started the process about three weeks ago of providing a numeric update on the master plan and a graphic update of the master plan, which will depict, they're two separate items, but they're interrelated. The update on the overall master plan goes through every lot, every condominium building, identifying exactly what was built, number of bedrooms and square feet, which are the metrics that were used in the master plan. We similarly go through lot by lot that has been constructed to date, outlining the number of bedrooms, square feet, and we'll be able to provide an update so that we can, you can ask the question, how many units have been built to date? We can say 133 comprising 520 bedrooms and some square feet, and that will probably be available, it's probably going to be in the December timeframe, maybe the December meeting, we'll be providing that document. We should have the organization chart ready for you for the next meeting we appear before you, which will be dependent upon, at this point, I believe, receipt of comments technically from John when those are available. So I apologize, I should have...
So no need to, this is Kira, thank you.
Anything else?
I'm seeing some other zone, picture here?
From where?
From, from the, over there, maybe?
Oh, no, we didn't do that, I don't even think you can see the tennis court in Delaware, no. That would be what it would look like from here, you know, from one side, that's what it looks like. I didn't...
It's a pretty picture, but I'm just wondering from what, what bench, bench court were we looking at here?
It's all internal, there's the tennis courts today.
We're not seeing it from the hill or 22?
You're not going to see it from anywhere offsite, that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you.
You can see that.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving on. Keen Stud discussion. It was dark.
Hey, good evening, how are you?
Good.
So my name is Juan Torres, I'm a resident of Armenia, I'm one of the owners at Keen Stud. We, as you know, have an active application in front of you, we have comments from your consultants, and we're actively working on a resubmission. We spent two and a half years going through a conservation analysis, studied a lot of different things with this planning board and with these consultants, submitted, we got the findings, we started the subdivision process, and again, we're working right now on the resubmission. Part of what we thought of meeting tonight is, we had a conversation with Paul, with George, James, Nina, and ourselves and our team, and discussed some of the concerns regarding visual. And as part of it, we thought it'd be good for us to stop by and talk a little bit about our goals, our vision, more importantly than also introduce Nicole from Hart Howerton. She has a couple of questions, and ideally, get your concerns. We believe that our goals are more aligned than is led to belief, and for us, we care about the community, I live in the community, we care about farming practices, we've been involved in the equestrian industry for a very long time, and our goal with this property, which was sewn for a restored development overlay, is to protect agriculture and protect the farming. We're trying to grab 700 acres and do 27 farms. We're going to protect the woods, we're going to protect the wetlands, we're going to add buffers, and ideally, ensure that the land remains to be mostly used for agricultural purposes and protected in perpetuity. We understand that there are some concerns from your side, so as such, we thought it'd be good to bring in Nicole to talk a little bit about the plan, a little bit, ask some questions about some of those concerns, so that when we resubmit come end of the year, we try to find ways to address any concerns that the board might have. Nicole, I don't know if you want to...
Hi, good evening. Chairman and board members, Nicole Emmons from Hart Howerton. We are working with the applicant, in particular, looking at design guidelines and potential restrictions to help maintain a character of the site and the architecture that is in keeping with the town of Armenia and the region, and in the setting of the agrarian and equestrian fields and paddocks. So wanting, in thinking of those, and thinking more specifically with regard to your concerns, we would like to make sure we have an opportunity to hear those. There are a few questions that we have proposed, but they may not be the only questions that we need to review tonight, but wanted to hear from you specifically, or to the extent you are able to address, your concerns regarding the site and the visual. What do you envision as the appearance of a lot? These are average of 20 acres, 20-acre lots. And what potential mitigation strategies would you prefer? So when we think about a visual impact, and I know you've been, you're a consultant as well here, George James, there are opportunities to manage any potential visual impact with landscape, thinking about the materials that homes would be composed of, the colors, limiting the colors, limiting the materials to more natural materials, colors that blend in, restricting heights and so forth, so that the roof lines are below the tree lines on, set on the hillside and so forth. So wanted to hear from you, I have an opportunity, so that we can then, and come back with recommendations for design restrictions that reflect your comments and concerns.
Okay, I'm going to take up a little bit of time, I first want to congratulate Mr. Torres. For the Silo Masters, what you did was attract the number-one equestrian jumper in the world to Armenia, it was a high-profile event, and it said Armenia is not just a community in the middle of where? And I think what you did was put on a wonderful event that was advertised with little signs, all, they're a lot nicer to look at than all the political signs we see. So thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, I want to read from the comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plans are not law, but they are evidentiary, it was a case in Bedford, New York, about, that rested on a comprehensive plan. This is what guides our vision, this is put together by the entire community, all the stakeholders of the community. So this is not me, Ken Topolsky, this is the voice of Armenia. While the town needs to keep its middle-class families, it also benefits from the presence of a large number of second homeowners and retirees who pay taxes but do not send children to school. These residents generally contribute more in taxes than they consume in municipal services. They also employ many local service workers and spend money in the community. The town more recently received a proposal for an equestrian-oriented farm community development on Depot Hill, which faces Delaware Hill across the Harlem Valley. These two important proposals, close to the Hamlet Center, are at a scale that is unprecedented for Armenia and could dramatically change the town's character. It is important to the other goals of Armenia's comprehensive plan that these developments be designed in a way that does not detract from the scenic character of the community, protection of most of the landscape as open space. This will help maintain the scenic character of what is... that does not detract from the scenic character of the community, protection of most of the landscape as open space. This will help maintain the scenic character of what is widely regarded as the town's most important view shed, the valley to Depot Hill. Wherever possible, configuration of development is... That's not appropriate. Depot Hill is mentioned maybe seven times, maybe 12 times in the comprehensive plan. I'll keep reading. Scenic preservation. Armenia's extraordinary scenic resources are a major factor in making the town a popular location for second homes and tourists. In order to allow growth that does not compromise the town's scenic character, this plan update recommends that the town adopt a scenic overlay district, which we have, encompassing highly visible hilltops, hillsides, rolling terrain, farms and fields, and other scenic features of the town. Let's see. "The view from Dela Verne Hill at the turnout on Route 44 is a view shed that has been mentioned most often." These are all quotes. Depot Hill and the important ones. Depot Hill Road from Water Tower to Old Route 22. Traveling south and looking eastward, a patchwork of textured fields sloping gently uphill toward forest-covered summits fills the landscape. To the west, in a broad view of mountain tops over the horizon, including Dela Verne Hill, a large old farm sits halfway... At the halfway turn of the road, which then crests to the well-manicured Keen Stud Horse Farm. At the western end of the road is an immense view of the valley and the Silo Ridge Country Club with Reseac to the south. So from this, my concern is that we listen to all of the community residents who want to protect the scenic value, this the view shed that they consider the most important in this community. I have one or two other concerns. This one is based on a history that we've had with the Silo Ridge project, where we've managed to be in litigation over valuation. I want to know how we're going to avoid being thrust into the same situation here when we value the properties and we assess them for tax purposes. I don't know if that's appropriate for us, but we don't want to spend that kind of money on another lawsuit. So that's it. I hope something... I think, again, I had a lot more negative feelings before than after I saw the event at Silo Ridge. I'd like to see this... Oh, and one last thing. I would love to see there be a wastewater self-contained treatment unit as opposed to septic unit. That's my comments.
Of course, there's always concerns with the fire service. And I can't speak for the media, but I know there's... I just hope being as a former fire chief, there's a problem. You building a water... That's something you guys have to try. I don't know if it's a law resource in the town or I do or not, but that's better be known to be thought. And I'm concerned I do have, I live on the other side of town in Los Angeles. So from all those hills, eventually, where's the water go? Water was down there. Where's it go? The animal lost it eventually. That's a concern I have. Said that from the start? They give them there.
I guess I would make one suggestion. I think Hart Howardson probably has a lot of experience and knows a lot of the things that subdue the look and the imposition on a view shed of a project like this. And I think it would make this all a lot easier if those things were proposed rather than us having to figure them out or guess at them. I mean, you, I'm sure, have dealt with deed restrictions on reflective glass, and it sounds like you've thought about height and screening. You know, I think Ken expressed the concern that, you know, people don't want to see a chopped-up view that looks like a subdivision. And I suspect you can come up with something that's very visually appealing and meets the needs of subdividing, but also doesn't raise the ranker of the town. And to the extent, you know, you could do that and not, you know, and not have to go through cycles of people objecting, obviously behooves everybody. But I think sometimes developers... Not this developer, but I've seen in the world where, you know, they sort of drip it out and see, "Can I do this?" Because they don't want to put the deed restrictions in. And I just think it'll be a lot easier here because we're going to land in the same place anyway, I suspect, or in some, you know, acceptable place. You're probably going to need them for the value of each individual property anyway because the neighbor of a property of this type isn't going to want to see a giant glass castle next to them or, you know. And so I think we are... We have to turn to you as the designer to do something that, you know, doesn't just maximize necessarily the dollar of, you know, of the development, but give us, you know, give people something in the town that... And I don't just even mean this planning board, but collectively as a community, people feel like they can say yes to. And that would be my counsel for what it's worth. I'm allowed to give such counsel.
I just have one comment. What are we calling this? Initially, when we heard the proposal, that we were calling this an agricultural community? And how can we call it an agricultural community when we're splitting sites up to 10-acre lots and giving people the opportunity to call themselves farmers? So... To me, an agricultural community, we're talking about a vast acreage where you're going to plant crops or whatever. I don't understand how we can call this an agricultural community.
So under the conservation analysis, we said that 60% or more of every lot has to be used for agricultural purposes. Right now, we're talking about taking it up to 90% has to be used for agricultural purposes, whether people are planting crops, where they have cattle, where they have horses, where they do equestrian. So ideally, it's not putting a house in the middle of a field is working with the community, working with people like Mike Lawrence or hiring people so that they farm the land. And they could use crops or they could use it for horses. We do believe that there's going to be a number of people that are going to have horses in their properties. That's our goal. Our goal is to continue to... No different than the comprehensive plan, is to develop and encourage the growth of agricultural in a profitable business within the context of preserving open space. That's what we're trying to accomplish.
So we're going to leave this to the volition of each property owner, whether they want to farm it or not?
Well...
Is that correct?
The deed restriction says that they have to use it for agricultural purposes or open space.
So they don't have to have a unified approach on putting crops in or whatever? I get a concern because now we're talking about... When we're calling it an agricultural community, we're also talking about tax relief, are we not?
I'm not a tax expert, so...
Well, I'm just proposing that out because you do get some tax relief if you're a farmer. So if we're calling this an agricultural community, how is that going to affect the taxes on the property? I mean, if we're talking about extra dollars on a property, let's say we're going to sell this house for a million dollars. Are we going to pay a million dollars in taxes? Or are we going to say this is an agricultural piece of property? That's my concern.
Yeah, it's something that we can talk to a tax expert about. Right now, the property is agricultural, is used for agricultural purposes. And constituents in the town, if they have a property and they're using farming and what they do for taxes, that's...
My understanding is you need to earn a certain threshold to get the tax break. And it's somewhere around $21,000. I don't know if that's still the case. However, the comprehensive plan, when it says development such as agricultural or equestrian... So if it is equestrian, it's consistent with the comprehensive plan.
That is the goal.
And to echo what Jamie said, look, we all don't want to come around 22 and look across the valley and see a patchwork. That would put a knife through the heart of everyone here. Give us a picture.
I live in town. I've lived in town the past 15 years. My family's still very involved at Silo Ridge. My parents have houses at Silo Ridge. My brother has houses at Silo Ridge that overlook the facility. We are on the same page. And our goal is to work together to find ways to do something that ensures that this looks like agriculture but promotes profitable ways to make agriculture and equestrian work. That's our goal. And that's why we're here, so we could hear your concerns and bring in experts such as Hart Howardson to find ways that ensures that in longevity, it's done the right way.
Paul, I have a question. That's making me a little nervous that I want to make sure we're not overstepping a bound. Is it appropriate... Is taxation a consideration for the planning board?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, it's... Your review is really the environmental...
And I only ask it because I don't want us to get in trouble by having on the record if that is something we're taking into consideration.
No, and that's... It's a fair limitation of the board's review.
I mean, maybe it's appropriate to raise as a consideration, but not one when we ultimately look at the approval.
That's right. It won't be reflected in any...
It's fair to ask, I think, but I just don't want us to get ourselves in trouble.
Yeah, it's more... I think the one comment that I heard in addition to, you know, just discussing the comprehensive plan and how the community's going to look at all of this is the whole idea of avoiding it looking like a patchwork. That was a very direct comment. And I actually would defer... If you'd like, you have your visual consultants here, and he might be able to kind of synthesize some of the comments that have been provided.
Sure. Thank you. You're Dwight Bush. Yes. Ms. Anderson, will you take my seat?
For those of you who don't know me, I'm George James. And I've been working in the town for quite a while. I really enjoyed hearing what everybody said about the agricultural communities. I... When you redid the SPO in 2011, I drove every road in the town, documented it, and helped to create it. And I completely agree with the whole concept of, you know, what makes the views so wonderful? And it's the agricultural views. It's not like an Adirondacks view. It's a working landscape view, which really makes it so scenic. And if you change the working landscapes, it would actually change the view. For the applicant, you know, I prepared this letter from June 21st, right? And I think, you know, the most important thing is is that you're subdividing. You're not developing, right? And so somebody else is going to come in and develop. And so what's, I think, most important for this town and its decision-making is for them to have evidence of what it's going to look like. And the idea that you developed, you know, this summer, the idea of a reasonable worst-case scenario, which would be simulated through photo simulation using various viewpoints, so you could see it ahead of time. But defining what that reasonable worst case is is really important, right? What can somebody who's not you, right? You know, you may have the complete best, you know, best ideas at Hart, but they're going to sell the property to somebody else who's going to do whatever they want to do. And understanding what the deed restrictions are and then simulating that so you could see a... So this board can see what it's going to look like or what is the reasonable worst case that it's going to look like. And that can be very informative because that can also feed back into, "Well, maybe we need to revise the deed restrictions," right? And so it can be used as a planning process, a planning tool. And so, you know, I think you all are on the same page, which is actually pretty wonderful. And I think if we, you know, get evidence that this board can make decisions on what can happen here, I think that's really the necessary piece of this.
But I would also say those deed restrictions are so important, Juan. Like, once you subdivide... Once this board approves the subdivision, we have no control over who comes and builds it other than the deed restrictions. And I think, I'm sure, there's a natural tension between profitability and deed restrictions. But I'm sure you guys can come up with an intelligent set of deed restrictions that leads everybody to believe it will be visually pleasing and not, you know, and not ruin the basic ethos of the town.
Right. Yeah, what I will say too is I think being at the Silo Ridge Masters, which, by the way, was incredible to, you know, incredible production by Torres family. Just, we had a lot of people that came up to me because I'm from Armenia that was... That were visiting, and they said, "Where's Silo Ridge?" And so, you know, point across the street, and they're like, "Oh, that's it? That's this huge development that, you know, people have been talking about?" So I think there's ways to do things that will make it where this, you know, big development in people's minds like just blends into the scenery and will, you know, this could actually add value if done correctly with the deed restrictions and the visuals. We can look at it in a perspective that, yeah, you know, just because it's empty doesn't mean it's beautiful. Like, this could also be very beautiful and even more beautiful, maybe, if done correctly. So I think it's just a matter of perspective and just making sure that it aligns with everything. And like I said, with looking at Silo Ridge, you almost can't even tell it's even there, all these homes and big production. So looking at all the different options and presenting them will be a big thing.
That's our goal.
Just one last thing is I don't think the... The board's not going to design it for you, give you feedback. And I think, you know, I think you got some good feedback, especially about the comp plan. I think it was exactly the right thing to do because that's where your decisions should be coming from. And then, you know, I think there's a design exercise here. And I think it's a very exciting design exercise, I think, because it's really an exceptional place to be doing work.
Thank you. The comments were very helpful. And we wouldn't want to go into this without an opportunity to hear from you and understanding that we will come back to you with visuals that will help to foresee what may occur here or a scenario or two that may occur. So I just want to make sure that all the board members have a chance.
If there's any way you can leave any kind of open space in the middle...
With respect and also respecting the desire to have the open space and the visual from...
Yeah, because we're going to work on that. That's what I'm saying. But honestly, it was nothing else. So if you make that happen, I mean, anyway.
Yeah, so we'll work on design guidelines. We'll work on potential restrictions and work on updated visuals and that stuff.
And potential...
Just to know that the...
Right.
...dealings are...
And potential lauding alternatives.
Yeah, it could be a different...
Could be lauding alternatives.
I just have... Just... I can't help myself sometimes, but I've worked in this business long enough. And I worked with an old chairman of a planning board. And he said it's the proper goal of the applicant to propose, and it's the proper role of the planning board to dispose. In other words, to rule on that. So I think what these folks are saying and what Mr. James so eloquently said is "We're looking to you folks to put together, to use a real estate time, your highest and best offer as to what you propose this to be, including your deed restrictions." And then it'll give the board something then it'll give the board something to to actually look at and respond to you with. Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
We're taking the approach of allowing the zoning law and the SPO protection and the comprehensive plan to be what speaks for the town and the community for future for someone that wants to develop a parcel in the future. But if we need to take it a step above that and make it better and work with professionals that could even ensure through deed restrictions that it's even better, we'll work.
Perfect. We won't come back empty handed.
Oh, and I do think we'll include it, but part of the deed restrictions talk about ponds being required so that there's water in case of fire.
That's my concern.
Yes.
My concern. And of course, runoffs are likely.
Yeah, that, yeah, anybody that's going to build has to do stormwater pollution prevention plans and all that stuff.
Does your water go downhill or something?
Unless you pump it. I have one piece of new business, and it has to do with a development that's being proposed of 31 houses or 28 houses. It's already to the point where a board member has asked for having letters of interest to occupy these housing across from Fresh Town, and they're already talking design, where the street exits are going to be, not on 22. They're taking out not applications, but letters of interest. It's been discussed at the housing board, but I don't know if anyone here has heard anything about it. Exactly my point, and it was, it's on the Facebook page. It's sort of the height of absurdity. It is totally unprofessional, and I would like that presented to be conveyed to the board, and I certainly would like to convey it myself, because people are ready to move on a project, in a project that has wetlands all around it, and it's, good luck.
Okay, with that being said, any other matters? Need to approve 911 minutes?
I need to approve 3 minutes.
Need a second?
You got it.
All in favor?
Aye.
So carries, we need to approve 10924 minutes.
I move to approve the minutes again.
Do you say it?
I'll say it.
In favor? Aye. So carries.
I have a few minutes.
You're going to be real few minutes, like three minutes, yeah? When I get there, you go home. Sorry, cut me short tonight. It's not a public hearing.
I just, I just, this, my name is Sharon Kroger. I just wanted to share a couple of things with you about simultaneous activity in the community that surrounds what the decisions that you're making. In other words, things are going on, and it seems important for me to make you aware of it. I'll try to summarize. There is currently a civic organization entitled The Community to Save the View from Dela Verne Hill, and that activity is taking the form of petitions that are being circulated townwide. They're in the various houses of worship and in civic organizations and historical society, et cetera. I'm going to read you the wording, just so that you know what's on the petition, and it should help to clarify why this is happening. "We invite those who live, work, or worship in the town of Armenia to sign this petition to save the priceless view from the Harlem Valley from the observation point on Route 44. This location has historically been used as a place of meditation and worship as well as by sightseers. It is a part of an even greater extensive view which can be seen from higher up on the mountain at Weathersfield. Standing in the hairpin turn observation point on Route 44, one can see the grand expanse of the Harlem Valley north to south with a particular unbroken, curving agricultural field in the immediate foreground that used to be part of the old Culver Farm. This particular unbroken field has been continuously in agriculture, should be preserved in the public interest and put into conservation by one means or another. This classic view should not become part of any kind of future development. The Armenia Master Plan of 1990 explains the importance of this particular view shed, sometimes called by historians the gateway to the Berkshires. The Armenia Comprehensive Plan of 2007 stresses the importance of ongoing protection for certain quality agricultural soils in strategic locations such as this one. We believe that the town of Armenia itself should have placed a conservation easement on this particular parcel after Walter Culver died and would like to remedy this mistake in the public interest. Please sign this petition to show your agreement so that we may convince the Conservation Advisory Council, the Armenia Planning Board, and the Armenia Town Council that development should not take place on this particular property, which is basic to the view from Dela Verne Hill."
Okay, Sharon, your three minutes is up. I'm sorry to close this meeting. It's not a public hearing tonight. I don't mean to be rude, but someone's got to go to work tomorrow morning. Sorry. With that being said, any motion for adjournment?
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
So carries.